All right. Good evening. This is the, I can't believe I can say this already, November 2nd, 2022 Cottage Grove City Council Meeting, which I am calling to order. Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you'd all please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Will the clerk please do the roll?
Councilmember Cambada.
Here.
Councilmember Dennis.
Here.
Councilmember Thede.
Here.
Councilmember Olson.
Here.
Mayor Bailey.
Here. Next item on our agenda is open forum. This is the opportunity for anybody that wants to speak on something that is not on tonight's agenda is welcome to do so at this time. We did have a sign up sheet out in the entryway for anybody that wanted to speak. We did have one individual that did sign up and it's Lisa Hartfall. And I believe is it 8068?
Yes.
8068 Hornell Avenue South in Cottage Grove. So, welcome.
Thank you. I've been doing a lot of readings, the county, the city, different cities. And one item that I came across was a draft for the Washington County CIP. And in it, they stated that in 2025, they were proposing to do a $50,000 major renovation of Park Grove Library. And then I found out that the city also is talking about having the library torn down and rebuilt someplace else so that Cottage Grove 80 apartments could add more apartments there. I do have an issue with, okay, spending $50,000 to renovate, how much does a new building cost? You're moving a library that is close to Crestview, which is a Title I school. And so then they, those students might be using the library for internet access and printing and those kinds of things. And if you're going to relocate it further away, that's kind of an issue for me. And then adding more apartments because you already got two more apartment buildings somewhat near that area. It's just a lot of traffic. So those are my concerns.
Sounds good. Actually, I will share with you that the, our comments regarding the CIP for Washington County are on our agenda this evening. And I believe, I was going to comment on it, but Councilmember Olson was also going to pull and comment specifically about the library because I think there needs to be some clarity on some of those pieces. And then maybe I can shed a little light. But I know our staff will always be happy to respond to you with what the city's specific pieces are and that we can share with you what our perception is.
Okay. I'd like to hear more. Thank you.
You got it. Thank you. All right. Was there anybody else that wanted to speak during open forum but didn't get a chance to sign up? All right. Saying no one, I will go ahead and close the open forum and I'll move to number five, which is adoption of the agenda.
Motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
All right. So you have a motion by Councilmember Dennis, second by Councilmember Olson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next is six is presentations. We do have one this evening. We have the Small Business Saturday Proclamation. And I believe Gretchen, are you taking us through this at all? Or no? Okay. So now because, okay. So what we're doing, just for the public, and I have my partner here and local business owner, one of them anyway, that is going to read the Small Business Saturday Proclamation, which in essence, we do the, that the Saturday after Thanksgiving is typically Small Town or Small Business Saturday. And so every year, we like to highlight that and talk a little bit about that. And so Councilmember Dennis is going to read the proclamation and then I'll look for a motion in the second by the council. So, Councilmember Dennis.
All right. Well, thank you, Mayor. It's always a privilege to be able to read this and mention not only as a small business investor here in the community, but also a member of our Chamber of Commerce, which is a fantastic resource and group of individuals. Should any businesses here in the community want to be involved in that process, please look them up online, Cottage Grove Area Chamber of Commerce. So here's the proclamation for Small Business Saturday. Whereas the city of Cottage Grove celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. And whereas according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 32.5 million small businesses in the United States representing 99.7% of all firms with paid employees and are responsible for 62% of net new jobs created since 1995. And small businesses employ 46.8% of the employees in the private sector in the United States. And whereas 79% of consumers understand the importance of supporting the small businesses in their community on Small Business Saturday, with 70% reporting the day makes them want to encourage others to shop small independent owned retailers, and 66% report that the day makes them want to shop small all year long. And whereas 58% of shoppers reported they shopped online with a small business and 54% reported they dined or ordered takeout from a small restaurant, bar, or cafe, or on Small Business Saturday in 2021. And whereas the city of Cottage Grove supports other local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas advocacy groups as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving is Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, the mayor and city council of the city of Cottage Grove, county of Washington, state of Minnesota hereby proclaim November 26, 2022 as Small Business Saturday and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Signed and passed the second day of November 2022nd, 2022. Mayor Meyer and Bailey.
There you go. All right. So thank you, Councilmember Dennis, for reading that. And again, you can see some pictures up on the screen, I believe, at home, just some of our, just a minor few of our local small businesses that are here in Cottage Grove. And obviously there's many more. So we encourage you to shop local during the holiday season and feel free to thank them for investing within our community. So with that being said, I will ask for a motion in a second to proclaim that Saturday, Small Business Saturday, November 26th.
We'll move there.
All right. So we have a motion by Councilmember Olson.
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Cambada. Any further discussion? Councilmember Dennis.
Thank you. I'd just like to mention very quickly, the 350 project, which is something that I've brought up here numerous times over the years. This is a project that was defined and created by a lady out of Minneapolis who is a small business expert and retailer. And basically what it does is it does this. It asks people to pick three businesses that they have in their community that they like and would miss if they were gone. And to stop in and visit them once a month and to spend approximately $50 within those businesses. Doesn't have to be all at one. It could be divided up. If that happens, we generate about $43 billion in revenue sales coming off of those purchases. And so one of the things which is very important, and it's important to work to support, as the mayor said, our businesses here inside of the community, to keep growing our economy one sale at a time. When you shop small, 68 cents out of every dollar stays right here working for everybody through payroll, taxes, business expenses, charitable giving, and other measurements as well. This is what makes the difference, folks. We do support all businesses, big and small, even though they might not be based here out of Cottage Grove, but they're here as investors. We want to make that clear. But there is a market draw of importance and extra benefit when you do it for those investors that are here. So it's an important thing to mention. And as we've done many times over the years, you know, we work very, very hard as a council and a staff and our various commissions to bring business opportunities to our city. And one of the things that investors tend to look at is, you know, if I bring my money here and if I put my process here, am I going to get a return? Do I have loyal customers? Do I have a good place to come and grow? And what we found, whether it be local or big businesses like we have in our industrial business park, Cottage Grove, generally speaking, is a place where people come to succeed. And it's very, very important. So I'd just like to add that little extra piece onto this that I feel is intrinsic in order for us to have full success across the board. And it's my pleasure to share that with the community.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So we have the motion down a second. All those in favor of the motions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Next on our agenda is consent, the consent agenda. Is there anything the council would like to pull on consent? Councilmember Olson first, I suppose?
I'd like to pull o please.
O, okay. And then?
H.
Councilmember Thede, H. All right. Anything else, council? Councilmember Thede, we almost start with H. Then the Glacial Valley, just for the public, the Glacial Valley Park Building Plan, specifications, and bidding.
Yeah. So we had a workshop on this and, and everything looks real good. We were talking about sustainability and solar and, and also geothermal. And we didn't really talk about wind much, but I know that, that wind gets used around this area a little bit more and so forth. And, and I was trying to go back and look. And I thought this was going to come back for some further discussion that, you know, once we kind of finalize some things and such. And, and so what I'd like to do is, is have some more discussion around it, possibly even, you know, pull it to have some more discussion and maybe bring it back another, another day or something like that. But I guess I, one of the big things as I, as I was going through it, doing a little research, looking at geothermal, you know, it's one of the lowest areas in the United States, you know, benefit wise for geothermal. And, and we're talking about the 25-year payback for it, the 110,000 for it. And, you know, I just, I guess I personally, I need some more convincing that, that that's a fiscally responsible thing to do. So I guess if we'd like some questions or if you guys are open to, you know, pulling it and, and, you know, talking about later or having another session on it?
Well, I think what we can do is maybe for the public, I'll just give a little background and then, I don't know if we want, Zach, do you kind of kick it off for a quick sec? I'm not so sure if the council needs or wants to, I know you would like maybe have a conversation, but let's, let's see what the council feels. Just for the public, what we're doing is we are developing a new park in Cottage Grove. It's called Glacial Valley Park. It's off of the new Ravine Parkway and County Road 19. It's kind of up in that, almost towards that Woodbury area, but, but it's in Cottage Grove and that particular area is all intertwined with what we call the glaciers went through there. And there's a lot of natural space, natural grasses and that. One of the things that the council really liked about this particular area and doing something different with this building, if you go to a lot of our parks right now, you'll see buildings that are pretty much, you know, I want to say split brick, you know, kind of basic buildings. But we wanted something a little bit more unique up there. And we really did a, did a deep dive into the carbon footprint, thinking of Glacial Valley Park and the natural amenities and things that are up there. What we were looking at doing is how do you, how can we make this building and this park be basically carbon neutral? In other words, energy efficient and so on. And so some of the things we talked about as Councilmember Thede is bringing up is what are some of the options that we can do to support that idea? And one was solar, which I think we all pretty much 100% agreed on the solar piece. The other one was geothermal. And there was a couple of different types of ideas that we were looking at geothermal. Geothermal is more expensive as, as was mentioned here. And so I know that I believe staff or you guys went back and looked at some options of a, I'll call it a cheaper version of geothermal. That makes more sense with the building of the size and that. And I don't, Zach, if you want to take it from there to kind of talk about the rest of it.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor members of the council. Yeah, we've, we've, we thought we heard at the September 9th workshop or September 7th workshop that council wanted to achieve a net zero building. So that's kind of what we were building the design towards. And that's the design you see before you. And as the mayor had mentioned, solar will basically cover all of our electrical usage. So the solar will cover all that. And then the geothermal is meant to, to take care of the HVAC mechanical system. So I can't go into great detail. John McNamara with Wald McNamara, an architects and engineers can probably give you more information, but he's obviously got a consultant working on the project as well for our design team that he's got more of that information on the details for it. So I think I'll just have him come up and just briefly explain the system that we ended up on because we did do a few different interpretations of that. And he can maybe explain that and how we, even maybe the backup boiler and how that works too.
Evening, Mayor and council. Certainly, the conversation that we had at the workshop really kind of went, talked a lot about trying to achieve the lowest energy use in the building that we could. And the presentation really kind of focused on a combination of using solar power and some sort of a ground sourced heating cooling system, which is the geothermal system that we have designed into the project right now as a way to look towards getting the lowest energy use, trying to achieve net zero. And that particular idea really revolves around occupancy of the building, you know, how, you know, how often are people going to be in it? What are the number of people and that type of stuff? So based on some assumptions related to occupancy, we designed a geothermal system, a well field on the north side of the park building to alleviate most of the heating and cooling load on the building. Certainly in Minnesota, we have these peaks that are sometimes we need to shave off and we didn't want to leave the building without enough heating during the winter time. And so we did decide as kind of this hybrid is to put in a small backup boiler in the building to be able to kind of shave off the peak of the, the heating season. But the geothermal system is designed to take 100% of the cooling load for the building. And as Zach had mentioned, we are planning a solar power system to be able to offset a lot of that cost for electricity for the building as well. The geothermal system, based on the information we got from our geotechnical engineers, would tend to suggest a horizontal well field is a better solution for that site than a deep vertical bore on there because there is limestone down around 100 feet. And ideally, we'd like to get wells down between 130 and 200 feet. And so the most cost efficient way to do that is to utilize the layers on the site, which is quite a bit of sand on the northern part of the site to put in a directionally bored geothermal system that we can achieve the number of wells that we need in that area. And it gives us the, the highest amount of flexibility for any changes in the future. And so based on the feedback that we got from that last session and the viability of putting in this geothermal system, that is the system that we have currently included in the design documents that we're looking for approval on. There are some, you know, unknowns related to its final cost. Certainly, the numbers that we presented to council put that in, that 100, 110,000 as an additional cost of the project in order to achieve that. And our initial conservative estimates put the payback, you know, in that 20 to 25 years. And so that should be in alignment with the past presentations that we've done.
Okay. Did council have, or Councilmember Thede, do you have any questions regarding what you shared on the geothermal side?
Yeah. So did, so the, obviously, when we found out about the limestone and going down, if, if we were to go down, that obviously deeper is a, is a more, you get, you get a greater effect of the, of the heating or cooling. Is that correct?
It, Councilmember Thede, it's the depth of the well. So the deeper the well, the more we can extract from it. And so we would have to do roughly 46 wells at 130 feet deep versus like 35 wells if we were doing them 200 feet deep. And so you're paying per cost per well. So if we go to a horizontal system that are 200 feet long, we can achieve that same amount of heating and cooling for the building.
Okay. So we were, so we didn't change our cost estimates by going horizontal?
Correct.
We're figuring it's about the same?
Yes.
As the, as long as we don't have to bore through the limestone?
Our concern was the potential unknown to the contract for the layer of limestone because we did not do wells that were much deeper. We're somewhat reliant on some wells that were drilled in the area to kind of support the geology that we know in that area, which suggests that there's a layer of limestone down around that 100, 130 foot mark on there. And so to eliminate some risk in the bidding part of the project, we decided to take the lowest risk, which was to do the horizontal system, which we have the most information on.
All right. Yeah. And I was just trying to, trying to think now. So St. Louis Park has done this with an environmental building. And you say they have achieved, well, and what, what definition of net zero? Anytime we got to turn the boiler on because the systems aren't going, that, that doesn't really constitute net zero. So what's, what's a, how do they measure net zero? And it looked like they had done some certification or something like that.
I don't know that I can speak to St. Louis Park. What I can share is that in our conversations after our meeting, it, we wanted to make sure that we were reducing risk in the building related to potentially not having enough heat in the building during the winter time. And so the conversation revolved around putting in a supplemental boiler in the building so that if in the event that we can't achieve the heating levels in the building that we would like to, based on, say we get down to minus 30 or something like that, that we have the ability to use a supplemental boiler to offset some of that, some of that heating issue there. Cooling, we have no issue. We can provide all the cooling we need with the geothermal system. It's just that what if factor that the facility folks felt that having a small boiler in the building would alleviate that risk. So ideally, the, the geothermal system would provide that heating and cooling 100% of the time. But we don't want to put the city in a situation where it gets too cold for that system to be able to keep up. If that answers your question, councilmember?
Somewhat.
Sure.
Maybe, and just to add a couple more things is, you know, we need to be responsive to the customer needs. And I think that's why the boiler needs to be there. So that is especially with those operable windows, we're worried about, you know, if it's a 50 degree day and people are operating those windows, we want them to be able to do that. And really, the boiler can just do, give you that quick heat recovery. So it doesn't mean you're running it the whole night, but it gives you that 20 minutes to kind of recover the heat in the building, half hour or whatever it might be. And then the geothermal can kind of take from there. So you're right. It doesn't mean it's going to be net zero 100% of the time. We hope it is, but it doesn't necessarily mean it's going to be net zero 100% of the time. And in terms of the energy, there's going to be times where we're selling energy back to the grid through solar. And there's going to be times where we're using a little bit more. So it's kind of that balancing of the whole season or the whole year calendar here. So.
Okay. Council, any other comments on this particular topic? All right. Did you get what you wanted from that?
Well, yeah. I guess I'd still like to, I'm not sure that we would ever, you know, recommend somebody in this, in this area getting, you know, putting like geothermal in their house or something. I mean, solar is used a lot. I guess I'm still concerned about the fiscal responsibility associated with that and, and in using that. But I got a feeling that if I, if I request it to get pulled for a separate vote, that I'm probably going to lose at least two or two, but.
I mean, but that's up to you. I mean, you have to make that call if you want to do that. I, I mean, I know that for the public, I mean, the council did discuss this during a couple of different workshops and I think we gave some direction.
We had the one workshop.
So, yeah. Oh, Councilmember Dennis.
Thanks, Mayor. A building of this type would have how long of a service life? 75 years?
I always like to tell my clients a building will last as long as you reinvest in it. So there are systems, yep. There are certainly systems in the building that have a life expectancy on it that you would need to replace over time. A lot of those are in the mechanical systems like boilers, like air handlers and that type of stuff. Usually their life expectancy is in that, you know, 40 plus year range. But as long as you continue to maintain your building, it will last as long as you would like it to.
Yeah. So, so in essence, on the, the return on investment at 25 years, we'd have a, a period of time that the building would still be fully functioning and viable, that we'd be really in a good position relative to our cost operated.
Councilmember, most definitely.
Yeah. And then the other thing is with, and I know the world's changing very much right now with technologies. So if you look at automobiles, I mean, the big three are not going to be producing internal combustion engines here by 2035. So if you, if you look at solar, and solar is an important thing, and like any other technology that is here continues to emerge in a positive way forward. But we do have the challenge of our seasonality. And that is when, when the sun is high in the sky in the summertime and very low in the wintertime. So as that drops down, you see a loss of efficiency coming relative to the output of solar. Whereas a nice thing with, with geothermal is, you know, the, the water under the ground stays 55 degrees or somewhere in that area, you know, permanently. So you, we're not going to have the fluctuations up and down relative to the output and the value of operating those, those processes. So I just wanted to confirm that and put that out as food for thought because I think it's reasonable to consider this as a long term option, probably long after all of us are gone. So.
Just as a note.
Yeah, Councilmember Thede.
And I'd like a little more confirmation. If you get into the, into the bedrock, you get down in further, you may see that 55 degree constant. But if you're running horizontal, you're going to see greater fluctuation because of the, you don't have that, that rock and that, you know, I guess I'd like to see some more data if, if what you're saying is true.
So if I could, Mayor?
Yes.
And I know we have some engineers in the room. When we build things and we go down below the frost line, right? 42 inches, 48 inches. Brian, maybe you'd be the best one to answer this. How constant does the ground temperature remain to a certain level? And we're talking about going down much farther than just simply for, for frost heaving?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Dennis, you're right that as you go further down, you do see that more consistent temperature. I don't know how deep those horizontal wells are going to be.
Forty feet at least.
Forty feet. Yep. So you could definitely see some fluctuation, but certainly as you get to that depth, you're so far from the surface that you're not going to see major fluctuations. I don't know exactly what it'd be, but you're definitely going to see more consistency.
Okay. Probably still pretty close to the 50 degrees, right? Okay.
Okay. Any other comments? Do you want to?
Well, it's just, there's just no, no factual data that we have that, that supports that. I guess I'd like to see, you know, we didn't get much data. I mean, I look at the city of
a, a period of time that the building would still be fully functioning and viable, that we'd be really in a good position relative to our cost operated.
Counselor member, most definitely.
Yeah. And then, the other thing is with, and I know the world's changing very much right now with technologies. So, if you look at automobiles, I mean, the big three are, are not going to be producing internal combustion engines here by 2035. So, if, if you, if you look at solar, and solar is an important thing, and like any other technology that is here, it continues to emerge in a positive way forward, but we do have the challenge of our seasonality. And that is, when, when the sun is high in the sky in the summertime and very low in the wintertime. So, as that drops down, you see a, a loss of efficiency coming relative to the output of solar. Whereas, a nice thing with, with geothermal is, you know, the, the water under the ground stays fifty-five degrees or somewhere in that area, you know, permanently. So, you, we're not going to have the fluctuations up and down relative to the output and the value of operating those, those processes. So, I just wanted to confirm that and put that out as, as food for thought because I think it's, it's reasonable to consider this as a long-term option, probably long after all of us are gone, so.
Just as a note.
Yeah, councilmember Bethany.
And I'd like a little more confirmation. If, if you get into the, into the bedrock, you get down in further, you may see that fifty-five degree constant. But if you're running horizontal, you're going to see greater fluctuation because of the, you don't have that, that rock and that, you know, I guess I'd like to see some more data if, if what you're saying is true.
So, if I could, Mayor?
Yes.
And I know we have some engineers in the room. When we build things and we go down below the frost line, right, forty-two inches, forty-eight inches, Brian, maybe you'd be the best one to answer this, how constant does the ground temperature remain to a certain level? And we're talking about going down much farther than just simply for, for frost heaving.
Mr. Mayor, councilmember Dennis, you're right that as you go further down, you do see that more consistent temperature. I don't know how deep those horizontal wells are going to be.
Forty feet at least.
Forty feet, yep. So, you could definitely see some fluctuation, but certainly, as you get to that depth, you're so far from the surface that you're not going to see major fluctuations. I don't know exactly what it'd be, but you're definitely going to see more consistency.
Okay. Probably still pretty close to the fifty degrees, right? Okay.
Okay. Any other comments? Do you want to?
Well, it's just, there's just no, no factual data that we have that, that supports that. I guess I'd like to see, you know, we didn't get much data. I mean, I look at the city of, uh, St. Louis Park, and they had done some early-in-depth analyses and, and things like that associated with, with the location and, and some of that sort of stuff. And I think, I think we're making a lot of assumptions. And, and especially with the smaller boiler room and so forth, if something should happen to the, to the geothermal, then it's going to be an after-the-fact type of thing where we're going to have to try to make that room bigger or, or break out a wall to, you know, not planning for, you know, if that geothermal does fail for some reason or we have to change something. And, you know, and I understand that there was a comment there, too, that, uh, one potential benefit, if, if something did happen to one of those horizontal well, you know, deals, we, we could do another one, but then that's additional cost. And there could be some potential benefit if another well, well fails, that, that, that something like there could be used for that, you know? So, that was all new kind of information that I, that I saw that we, we never discussed. So, um, yeah, I guess I'm, I'm, I'm just of the, the mindset that we, we just don't have all the facts and, and we're just, you know, kind of doing this because we think it's kind of neat to, to geothermal and sustainability. And I, and I'm all for sustainability if it, if it makes sense, so.
Okay. Councilmember Olson.
Thanks, Zach. Kind of listening to the conversation here, the question that I have for you is, if we were to have an additional workshop on this, is that going to put you behind the eight-ball in terms of your ability to get this project done in a timely fashion?
Uh, we'd postpone, yeah, we'd have to, I mean, it depends what comes out of the workshop. But if we do a workshop, it backs everything up a couple of weeks. And we were trying to get the, the bidding done prior to the holiday season. So, we would probably be back into January for that. So, it could push construction out another month or so.
Okay. So, it's going to change the bid environment potentially, is what you're saying?
It would potentially change the bid environment, but I don't...
Okay.
You might have better understanding of that.
All right. And then, for whoever wants to take this, you know, councilmember Bethany briefly mentioned wind versus geothermal. And I'm not going to put words in his mouth. I don't know if he's saying either or, or, or one is a supplement to the other. But what, if any, options exist relative to using wind in addition to the solar and potentially geothermal to support this building? Is that something that we've looked at, talked about, thought about, anything along those lines? I know we talked about wind as a potential option for energy at this building when it was built. And at that time, the, the decision was made not to, based on the fact that the wind was a bit of an inconsistent, you know, resource, kind of where this building is located. So, I'm just going to toss it out there if that's even something worth talking about.
Yeah, I'll defer to John.
Poor John. Sorry. Sorry, bud, we're putting you on the spot.
That's all right. Councilmember Olson, I'm not an expert in wind energy. I can tell you this particular area of the state would require, um, at least a, and again, I would have to probably get back to you on research, but there has been some stuff done with Washington County that would suggest...
Sure.
At least an eighty-meter-high wind tower in order to be able to hit the numbers that they would need. And so, that would bring in questions as to, you know, how's that going to get provided?
Yeah.
What would be the budget for that? Certainly, there potentially are other options to purchase wind energy. For the most part, wind energy is used to generate electric. So, we would need to think about a, a full electric solution for the building versus a solution that uses a combination of ground source, heating and cooling, and solar in order to be able to accomplish that. So, in order to use a wind solution, which certainly, you know, is something that you could consider, we would need to go to a completely electric system for the...
So, it really changes the specs of the whole project?
Uh, yes, sir.
And I know that we have residential properties in town who use geothermal. I, I mean, I know several people who, who do it and do it effectively. We also have businesses in town that use wind energy. There was a time when we, we had several who were interested in windmills. Fan Meter, which used to be known as Warner Electric, is the one that pops into my head right away. But, you know, the geothermal solutions for the residents that I know seem to be working quite well. I don't know if the, the geothermal system that you're proposing for Glacial Valley is equal to, you know, what we see in some of those residential properties. They tend to be larger homes. In fact, there's one right up the road from me on Baroque that, that uses it very, very effectively. But they seem to be awfully happy with it. And I know that we're faced with some challenges relative to the ground and the rock and all that kind of stuff, but it appears like you've met those challenges. So, from my two cents, you know, I'm twenty percent of the vote, but I feel fairly confident that the research has been done effectively and that we're, we're sitting in a good position. So, I, I would support the, the project as it's laid out.
Okay. So...
One more comment, quick.
I'm not good yet.
I mean, it'd be good to know to, to have some of that because as far as I knew, there was nobody in this area that, and, and St. Louis Park was the only municipal building in New York. And there was no, nobody in this area using geothermal. So, that would have been good information to have or, or to have. And, and kind of having an idea of what kind of, you know, success they're getting because every, all the, all the stuff I did on the internet and so forth was saying that geothermal is, is not all that efficient in this area, so.
Uh, councilmember Kamada.
With regard to the length, the depth of the wells, is that, is that meant to meet a certain temperature range or is it more or less to meet a volume requirement because that fluid is acting as the heat exchanger?
Uh, councilmember, yes. It is really related to how much service area we need in order to generate the amount of heat or cooling that we're looking for. So, if we go shallower with our wells, we need to drill more of the wells in order to hit that same target.
So, so in your experience, systems with a shallower well are not at a inherent disadvantage other than you need to drill more wells to equal the same amount, the same volume of fluid to exchange heat or cooling?
Uh, councilmember, to clarify, the horizontal system versus the vertical system really is a labor thing with drilling wells. Certainly, if you're a contractor that prefers to drill wells and you can drill through limestone, that may be more cost-effective for you to do that. The process that we're proposing for this project is to do horizontal directional borings. And the length of them would be comparable to a vertical well system.
Okay. And then, additionally, with this type of heating system, having the auxiliary boiler, as, as we kind of look to the future, you know, the volatility of fuel and gas, as we know from last year, price fluctuated a lot. So, I like the aspect of, you know, whatever the, the final, you know, requirements or needs for the building, that, that geothermal is going to be a relatively stable cost moving forward. Whatever it costs to heat in the winter or cool in the summer isn't going to change much. The fact that it's going to be drawing off of the solar syst, or the, the solar cells and that will be selling back to the grid further insulates us against any price hikes in, in electricity. If it's more expensive to buy, we're going to get more when we sell it back. So, so from those aspects, I feel like we're, we're being responsible in, in basically helping set the long-term maintenance cost for the building. The upfront cost, again, I can agree with councilmember Bethany that it, it's an added cost. And it's important that we make sure that that's a, a value add or a value proposition for our constituents. However, I think the, the long-term benefits of, of having a more stable pricing structure in terms of, of building maintenance is, is an aspect that we haven't really been giving its proper consideration.
Okay. So, council, what I'd like to do, if you're fine with this, is we'll pause this conversation and I'll, when we go to, for a motion to pass consent, we can pull this one as a separate item for vote. And that way, we can just deal with it that way. So, the other item that was asked about being pulled on consent then is O, which is the Washington County Response Letter. And I know, councilmember Olson, you had something you wanted to add on that item.
I did, thanks. And I'm going to actually ask for your partnership on this, Mayor. But I have two items with respect to the CIP letter that we are sending to Washington County, which is something that we do every year, that I wanted to just briefly touch on. First of all, I noted in the letter that there was some verbiage revolving around the arterial that we've been discussing as a necessity for access to Highway sixty-one with the new North Point development and the new development over in the Dunes area. And I know that that conversation has been ongoing with Washington County. I believe that our staff has met with both the Washington County engineer, in addition to Washington County administrative staff. And I believe there was even some commentary with Washington County commissioners. And so, I'm just looking for a brief update on where things stand on that project as of this moment because I know that our investors from North Point have made it abundantly clear that this is something that rises to the very top priority for them in order to make not only the, the current facility or facilities that they are building be as effective as possible, but it also has a direct correlation to any further expansion. So, I'll ask Jennifer, our city administrator, if she can take this, and then you can toss the ball to whoever you want.
Well, thank you, Mayor and council. This project has had really a strong partnership between Washington County and with 3M because obviously, 3M is a large landowner. And we met with them just today as we continue to structure and design the interchange, the layout of the intersections for it to facilitate, you know, future development on their site. So, we are working cooperatively with them. And then, also through the review process, we engage with the Department of Transportation as well. Currently, we have one federal grant for just over twenty-five million. We should hear by the end of this calendar year if we receive those dollars. And then, also, at your last council meeting, you approved the grant submittal for the railroad bridge. And we would find out at the end of Q1 of '23 if we receive those funds. And I was going to say, the mayor can probably give us more information in regards to where it is in the metro solicitation process with TAB, Met Council and the regional solicitation because our county partners are the ones that actually filled out that application. So, we actually shared in those resources to pursue funding for it because, obviously, putting those applications has a lot of financial expenditure. And we've been, you know, splitting those costs as we go. And currently, we're through, and working through preliminary design right now. So, we'll be moving hopefully into final design in early '23.
And are we confident that all the various stakeholders that need to participate to the degree that, that we have these partnerships in place are in a position where they can and, and will participate when the time comes to write those checks?
Mayor and council, I can't always make a guarantee, but at this point in time, every indication is that.
Okay. I know you've all been working very, very hard. And in fact, the mayor and, and Ryan Burfind were in Washington DC recently, meeting with Representative Craig, who's been absolutely phenomenal in her time, in her role with partnering at, at the city level. Having worked with, you know, several different congressional delegations in my time as a councilmember, I have to tell you, I mean, Angie Craig has been something else. And I think it's her background and experience as a business executive that really gives her that little bit extra edge when it comes to stuff like this. But Mayor, did you have anything you wanted to add in terms of the conversations you all have been having with respect to this southwest arterial?
Yeah. The only thing I can say, councilmember Olson, is, as mentioned earlier, Ryan and I did walk many steps up at the Capitol not that long ago and met with, obviously, Angie Craig and all our senators and, and even other representatives that are not even just specific to our area that were there from Minnesota. For example, Tom Emmer and such like that. So, just to make sure that they were keenly aware of, you know, what, how important this is, not just for Cottage Grove or Washington County, but it is for the, for the state of Minnesota. And so, I'm, I'm hopeful that that is indeed the case. Our administrator, Jennifer Levitt, mentioned TAB. Well, I am, I'm on the Transportation Advisory Board for Met Council. And this is on the list as they're looking at funding sources. But at the moment, depending on where we finalize that funding source, it's either, it's just under the cutoff. And so, literally, from a score, they score these. And so, we'll work on that hopefully and see if we can, depending on where all the different buckets of money end up coming for the different projects and that, we'll see if we can, we can get that one hopefully over the line. I do know the county does support it fully. And I've actually had other counties and other city advisors that are on Transportation Advisory Board with me express support for it. So, I'm hoping that we can see if we can possibly get that over the line.
I appreciate the update. Thank you. And just for the people watching at home, one of the reasons that projects like these require the degree of partnership that we're talking about is because, from a financial windfall perspective, we don't just enjoy the tax revenue as a city, but we also enjoy the tax revenue from the perspective of the county, the school board, often the state. And when we work with these sorts of investors like North Point, who are bringing hundreds of millions of dollars in, in investment to our community, there are a lot of hands out there that get a piece of that revenue. But in order to make that revenue happen, the project has to get off the ground and it has to be well-executed. And so, there's lots of different players that get involved, and it can be pretty complex. So, all of these various meetings are intended to smooth the road, so to speak, pun intended, so that this project can be as successful as possible, as quickly as possible. And then, the second item on the letter that I wanted to talk about, Mayor, was the portion about the Washington County library. So, again, I know that you specifically and our staff have had numerous conversations with folks at the county about our Cottage Grove library. And so have I in the time that I've served on the city council. You know, it's, it's important to note that library has been in that location since we were in the old City Hall building. The library was built in nineteen eighty-six. And over the course of time, there've been some different remodels and improvements and, and things where we've built up, but we've never been able to build out because it, it's landlocked. That's part of the challenge. And so, a little bit of a history lesson, there was a time when we had a county commissioner who was very strongly advocating for us to get some significant remodel dollars for that library to really ma, make it a premier library within the Washington County library system. And those dollars went away when that commissioner went away. So, it, it hasn't happened, unfortunately. But Cottage Grove is the second-largest city in the county. We contribute the second-most income in terms of our tax revenue to the county. And so, people like me like to look at, are we getting a return on our investment? And libraries are a really big deal. And there, there are some beautiful libraries throughout the Washington County area. In fact, Forest Lake had a new one built here several years ago. It's really, really great. Woodbury's working on Central Park right now, et cetera. And there have been questions about the location of the library. So, for those who remember when we were exploring the idea of a community center at the Shops of Cottage View, there was some discussion with the county at that time about, should we be looking at bringing the library to that location and doing so to create some synergy with that project? And truth, truthfully speaking, that piece of property is almost dead smack in the middle of the city of Cottage Grove. And there were people on both sides of that argument. I remember Senator Bigum was very adamant about keeping the library where it is for all the reasons that we've all talked about, its proximity to Crestview, the fact that, you know, kids can ride their bikes and those kinds of things. And in fact, she was the county commissioner who's trying to get us a whole lot of money to get that library remodeled. And, and that didn't come to pass, unfortunately. So, now, we're in a position where we've got a property owner in Grove Eighty Apartments who has expressed some very serious interest about that site to expand, you know, their Grove Eighty apartment complex because it's, it's been full since before it opened. And, and there's a demand for it. And of course, from our perspective, that puts that property on the tax rolls and enables us to enjoy more taxes, which then lowers the taxes for residential property owners in the community, et cetera. So, I just wanted to ask the question, and Mayor, I'll direct this to you. In your conversations with the county around the library and where it currently sits and the fact that it is in desperate need of either a remodel or potentially a teardown, you know, maybe you can give us a, a brief update on what you see the temperature being right now in terms of that facility and, and how it's being used. being used, and whether or not we're going to see an investment back into that library, or if we're going to see an investment in a new library in the city of Cottage Grove.
Well, that's the question. I don't know that I can actually answer that. I guess the message I can share with you is that our request as part of the message to the county is they put some dates out there, pretty far out, and there's no guarantees when you take a look at what they're proposing. When they look at doing a proposal for any type of public infrastructure, they usually set bonds, or they say they're going to go out to bond a certain year, and a certain amount of those dollars from that bond would then go to build the building or remodel the building, because from what we're being told, it would need extensive remodel if that was the case. Lisa, you brought up the one question about it. And so I don't even recall exactly what the 50,000, I thought the 50,000 was for planning. Is that correct, Administrator?
It was just cited in the CIP as design.
Yeah. And so I think there was some misinformation or misunderstanding about what that 50,000 was. It was for design. It wasn't for doing remodel. They haven't put any other money out there for the design or the remodel. What they've done is they've said that should we decide, or they decide to build a new library, or tear it down and rebuild or whatever, they will come back at a later date and say, we'll bond in whatever year. And one of the years that I'm seeing, I'm looking at right now, is around 2027. And so as it sits today, pretty much everything would remain as it sits today until at least 2027. And then they would bond and then make the decision, I guess prior to that, I'm assuming they'd make the decision what they were going to do. The one thing I did want to just state very emphatically is at no, at no time did we as a city say, don't do whatever you're going to do. We recommended all along that if the city were to build the community center, that we thought it was best to put the library with the community center for creating synergy, the busing and all that kind of stuff. And that was our city council's recommendation to the county. The county, though, owns the building. They get to do it. What I don't think the, what I don't believe that the public is aware is that in Washington County, how they do their libraries is the cities are responsible for providing the property. And the only one that isn't done at this point that I'm aware of is the one that they're currently on. So the property that they have the library on currently in Cottage Grove is owned by the library, or the county, excuse me, is owned by the county. And so in this particular case, we do, as it's been known for a while, that Grove 80 was interested in purchasing it to expand their facility. But whether they do that or not, that is going to be up to the county. That is their, it's been their decision from day one on what they wanted to do. It was their, the decision of the county to take the money that was originally earmarked for our library and move it to other libraries within the county, while ours sits, I guess, sits in queue. So I'm hoping with our conversations about what the next step would be with the county, and we obviously know we're going to have a new county commissioner here after the first of the year, at some point in time, we'll have a conversation about, about what that, what that means. But I also wanted just to be very clear that at the very beginning of all this, we were interested in keeping the library on the current site, but the county was not interested in what we were proposing, which would have been a two-story library so that it would fit on the site with parking and so on. And because they didn't want to do that, that's why we just said, our hands are up, we're, this is what we think you should do, but it's up to you to make the call. So I want to be very, very clear, because I do know there's misinformation going on out in the public about, you know, who said this and who said that. All I would share with you is go back and look at the record. It's all on our meetings. It's all on all the stuff that the county does to understand exactly who or what was responsible for the dollars not getting or keeping within, within the, within the Cottage Grove library system. And then lastly, and I do know that you were talking specifically, Lisa, I'm just, since you're here, I get to talk to you, and staff will still send you the info, but thank you for bringing the subject up, too. You know, there's a lot of things, and Councilmember Olson mentioned Carla Bingham, who was our county commissioner prior and is running now for county commissioner. But anyway, she has been adamant in the past about keeping it where it's at. Now, her and I have been at odds about the necessity of that, I'll be frank with you. Matter of fact, even if you just learn most recently, there was a plan for Crestview School to be moved. And it may still happen, though. There's still a plan out there, and the school district's eventually going to go back to another type of tiered referendum and such, and they need a new school. And so the chances of that school remaining there. And so what we try to do is we try to look long term, and I think that's what Councilmember Olson was mentioning. We try to look, what is the long-term vision of what Cottage Grove is going to be? So when I grew up in Cottage Grove on the other side of the highway, the City Hall used to be by where Ace Hardware was. Then it moved up to 80th Street. Now it's out here where we are here. Well, believe it or not, this is central Cottage Grove. So in years to come, this area right through here, where we're currently located, down to what was or could be in the future Shops of Cottage View, will be the true central part of Cottage Grove. And so the people that are currently using the library on one side of town versus the other, somebody has to, somebody has to travel. And we have affordable housing all over our city, and more than likely at some point, we'll have additional affordable housing in other parts of our community, probably in the not-too-distant future. And so what I'm sharing with the public is we have to look at the big picture, not just what is it doing for this little neighborhood over here. We've got to look about what's the benefit for the entire community, and frankly, South Washington County, when it comes to access to the, to the future library. But staff will give you all the details, Lisa, so thank you for bringing that up. And Councilmember Olson?
Just to recap, so what I think I'm hearing is, you know, with regard to where the library sits today, you know, it's a 36-year-old building. John very eloquently stated that buildings will last as long as you continue to reinvest in those buildings. So if a decision is made at some point by our friends at the county that they would, they would like to keep the library on that site, that's something that certainly is within their scope of responsibility to do, but it's going to require us to then make a significant investment in either remodel and/or rebuild. And because it's so landlocked, it has to go up. It can't go out. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, perfect. And if that decision is, you know, in the offing, and they look at it, and they say, gosh, that just doesn't seem very financially wise, then there's a possibility that the library could move, and that property becomes available potentially for somebody else who wants to use it for a different purpose. And that will be their decision as well. So we can certainly state our opinions, as we've done in this letter. But when it comes to making the decision, that's left to the county board. Fair enough?
That's fair. And I guess the only other two things not related to the library, I thought I'd just jump in real quick, is, you know, we've been looking at the letter, some of the projects, the road projects, and I know Councilmember Olson, you brought up Hunter Street as one of them, but a lot of the road projects that the county is looking at going forward in their future CIP, we're happy with, pretty much all of them, in the fact of what they're looking at doing and what needs to get done in Cottage Grove as we continue to grow. The only other, just for the, it is ironic, we're talking about parks a little bit ago, but is we are asking the county to master plan, or at least get the process going with master plan in Gray Cloud Island. Because there is growth happening down towards the Mississippi Dunes area, there is, in their CIP, there is a plan for a trail that goes on to the, on the island, but we're a little confused because there really isn't a park on the island where this trail would go to or whatever. So we would prefer, and that's our message, should the council agree this evening, that there actually should be a master plan, which they were working on before COVID hit, and then COVID, and then things kind of stopped. But we'd like to see a master plan, so we can work with the county, along with the landowners down there, to define how big the park's going to be, what the amenities of the park's going to be and so on, so that we have it all in advance, so we don't come in at the last minute and find out the landowner now wants to build homes down there, and the county and us are going, okay, now what do we do? And so that's our goal, is to really get a plan in place so that we know what's coming down the road at one particular time.
Because at some point, they're going to stop mining agri down there.
Yes, and probably sooner than...
Sooner versus later, right. So Mayor, then I would move that we adopt the consent agenda this evening minus item H, which we'll pull for a separate vote.
All right. All right. So I have a motion by Councilmember Olson, second by Councilmember Thede. Any other discussions, Council? We did a long one on consent here. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And then who wants to make a motion on H?
Move to approve H.
And I do have a couple other questions real quick.
Okay, let's, we got a motion, though, first. We have a motion to approve H, but Councilmember Olson, do I have a second?
Second.
I would second.
Do you want to take it? You said it first. So, all right, it's Councilmember Thede, second it. Okay, further discussion.
One of the things that I was meaning to ask, too, is obviously for a lot of the sustainability, there's, there's different grants, different things like that. Did we do any research on what's available for that to help reduce that cost, make it a little bit more reasonable? I mean, you see, you see that on a variety of different new technology, right, or things that don't quite hit that justification mark, but...
Yes, we have. Thanks, Councilmember Thede. Yes, we've, we know with the Inflation Reduction Act, we can now gain up to 30% credit for the solar panels, so that'll help offset those costs quite a bit. We haven't, we're still, the experts are still trying to figure out and determine the language, how that language works in there, but it seems like that, that should be something we should have a good chance of receiving. Geothermal, we continue to research it. I haven't found anything at the moment, but we'll continue to research that as time goes on.
One other question, and that I thought of, is that the geothermal, it's actually pumping water, in this case, like through the floor, through the, through everything and down through the wells, where it either cools it or warms it, comes back up through the building. So there is electric pumps that do all that, right?
Pumps and VFDs, yeah. So I don't misspeak.
Oh, you're good.
Mayor, Councilmember Thede, yes, the project includes pumps for the heating and cooling system. The project for ventilation is putting in heat pumps, and in-floor heat are the two sources for heating, and then the heat pumps will provide cooling within the facility.
And the solar is going to cover all that electrical?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I want, just, number one, I appreciate this getting pulled off for a separate vote. And I just want to make, you know, a statement that I'm very, very in favor of sustainability and using alternative methods. But I really like to, again, I tend to be that technical type of person in terms of making decisions, and feeling that I have all the information needed to make a wise decision. And, and I just, you know, that's why I'm not feeling that, that we've, you know, got all that information, but some of the different analysis and some of the different things on whether the geothermal would be efficient in this location, so.
Mr. Mayor, if I could add one more thing, just referencing back, Councilmember Thede, you had made a comment about other municipal buildings. I just, I shared the one as a reference, because I thought that was closest to our facility. But there's lots of municipal facilities that use geothermal, the Health, I'm sorry, the Fairview Sports Center in Woodbury, that's a geothermal system for both their ice rink and their field house. Burnsville's got their ice rink and some of their public facilities that use geothermal. So there's a lot out there. I was just trying to share the one that was the most relevant, so hopefully I didn't misinterpret.
Because I couldn't find any, going out the internet, I couldn't find any, any stories about, you know, any other municipal buildings with geothermal, so that would have been a good information to have.
Yeah. Sorry, well, sorry if I didn't clarify that.
Okay. Council, we then have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Councilmember Dennis.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank our staff team and our consultant for putting in a lot of work on this. And again, you know, I think it's been pretty clearly demonstrated here that based on the original costs we're going to put into this, which in the grand scheme of things, if you look at building costs and materials now, 100 grand, and yeah, it'd be nice to have it in one lump sum in my hands, but it's not a lot of money, relatively speaking, not at the scale that we're talking about with building things. The fact that we're going to have decades worth of viability here in front of us, where we're not going to have to be paying a cost, right? I mean, that's the return. And just the good feeling of knowing that you're doing something that's, you know, positive and protective and friendly for the environment. So, I mean, that to me is justification's right there. So I feel really good about it.
Okay. All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries four to one. The one other thing I would just share with the public real quick on this item, too, that was in the packet, and I'm sure it'll come back to us for just a general conversation, and that is one of the other things that we're looking at doing with this building, other than the sustainability piece of it, is there is a plan for a wall. There's a pretty significant wall in the inside of the building, and we're, we're going to be proposing a RFP for artists to help us design something for this wall that would be real, taking the idea of Glacier Valley Park into it. It was something, again, that the council talked about. That was something really that the council really got into the design of the inside of the buildings more than even the different sustainability-specific pieces of it. And so when, when this comes out to the public, we encourage you, if you know of anybody, whether you're on TV right now or in the audience, that is an artist, whether it's local or regional or national, there is some opportunity for them. We'd love to get some ideas of what would be awesome to see for this building. That would be local, you know, obviously something that's unique to that particular Glacier Valley Park. So anyway, that was just my comment. So with that, all of the items on tonight's consent agenda have been approved. Number eight is approved disbursement. Eight, A is pay the bills.
Motion to pay the bills.
We have a motion by Councilmember Dennis. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Thede. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Nine is public hearings are in, aren't on this evening. Ten is bid awards, there aren't on this evening. Eleven is the regular agenda. We do have one item on our regular agenda this evening, and it was a liquor compliance check violation. And our Director of Public Safety, Pete Kerner, will walk us through this one.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I really shortened this up. Remember back in February, we had a compliance check. So most of my recommendations that we have are exactly what our conversations came to last in February, so we stay the same. And in your packet, obviously, in the memorandum that was presented, I have pages of what the processes and everything is. So when I kind of talk about the compliance mission, I do want to let you know that as a department, I think we have some missed opportunities with our compliance, that we can really work with these businesses. And back in February, I did promise we would look at those. We're looking at some of the fee tables and everything. Those will be coming up soon. And with the addition of our community engagement officer, you'll see more of these come in. So more of a, just a, out there to, ha, ha, got you, or anything like that. That's never the intent on these. But it is a good opportunity with all of our license holders, how we can maybe reach out, so. But back in July 22 of 2022, we did conduct our liquor compliance checks. It was the second one of the year. We had one failure, Top 10 Liquors failed the compliance check. Just keep it real simple. We did have our decoy. She was 18 years old. As we always do, this 18-year-old was obviously 18 or even, even younger. There was, we don't go out and try to trick, or, you know, some the 19-year-old bearded guy that looks like he's 35. That's, that's not the case. She did, she was able to purchase a case of Coors Light beer. Just the facts, real simple. The decoy did go to the counter with a case of Coors Light beer. The employee actually asked the decoy for an ID. I know, speaking with management now, through Top 10, they actually had used the swipe and everything and overrolled that. So the decoy did present her ID, employee examined. The employee actually asked her if she was even old enough to purchase alcohol, and the decoy was honest and said no. So, and then still made the sale. When officers did go in, the employer right away said, I failed, I knew it. There was an assistant manager, I believe, that was present during the compliance failure, and ultimately a citation was issued to the employee. And we have a representative in a bit that will talk about sanctions that they've already done internally as well. So as you're aware, we do have two options for the compliance check. We can, we can always use the gross misdemeanor charge. We've had a practice here for 25, 30 years on compliance checks that we've done the misdemeanor. Obviously, if we had a really egregious incident, or the person bought and then went out and was hurt, you know, then we would definitely look at the gross misdemeanor charge. But for the compliance checks, these are truly meant to be educational, so, and generally, there's more... So, um, and generally, there's more internal sanctions for employees than, than even what a, a citation will end up having. So, um, in a moment, I will have, you know, the recommendation up. And I just want to remind you, I, what I did is, we had a lengthy conversation, as I mentioned last time, where, um, what, what we decided was the, with the suspension and fine. So I, I followed what we, what we, what conclusion we came to back in February as well. So, um, we do have, um, the district manager here, and I, she did want to, um, speak with you. So I'll, I'll turn it over to, um, Cindy, when she can introduce herself.
Thank you. If you wanted us to come up and to be official, you just need to state your name and address for the record, please.
So state my name.
Yeah.
Cindy Shubble.
And then, yeah, if you want to do your address or the address of the store, we just need something for the record.
Um, so my home address is, um, fifteen seven seven five Fjord Avenue in Apple Valley.
Okay.
So, Mayor, council members, um, I wrote down some thoughts just because I didn't want to get my thoughts jumbled. And I want to present something that is, um, serious because this is serious in nature. Our business is controlled substances. So I, if you don't mind, I can just read. So I find myself baffled that I'm standing here before you. When I got the call on July twenty-second, I was completely speechless. I have worked at Top Ten Liquors since before it was Top Ten Liquors. I started with the company in two thousand eight. My first store manager promotion was the Cottage Grove location. It was in two thousand thirteen. It's a store and community that really started my retail management career. Little special spot in my heart. Um, what really confused me upon hearing about the compliance check on July twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, is despite all the education and training we put into every single employee about conducting legal sales, um, this still happened. So I want to take a moment to kind of explain our current process of what we do with every single employee. When we interview candidates, um, we inquire about their comfort level with working with liquor, wine, beer, controlled substances, and if they're prepared to ID people. If they are, then we go through an onboarding, hire them. And in that onboarding process, I have an example, um, of what our email looks like. It's a whole welcome email with employee onboarding. But step number two, outside of just getting your name and number, um, step number two is take an online legal sales test. So people go on before they're even employed by us, take about forty-five minutes. They do an online, um, legal sales training that includes a, a thirty questionnaire. And they have to get a hundred percent on that test before they can even start with us. And then, on their first day, we have a new hire checklist. And on that new hire checklist, we have spots to have people sign off that they acknowledge. We have a half a page devoted to legal sales, understanding the clarity of the law, understanding that there are compliance checks and that they will happen in our stores. And then the next section is about carding, about how our system works, about how guessing age can be hard. So our system is set up to eliminate that. I'll get to that in just a minute. And so before they even get to a register, we've now talked about legal sales three times. So additionally, I also want to mention that, um, we conduct internally, uh, yearly legal sales training for our entire store, regardless if you're working in the back, um, or if you're the VP of Marketing. We all have to take it. Um, we just went through ours. We do it every September. So here's the information that led to, in a company-wide, um, legal sales training that was just concluded. So we do that every September. And so now let's move on into where the registers are. Our registers are set up in a way that for every transaction, you have to ask for the ID. You scan in the ID. You cannot continue on to a sale. You can't ring up a single thing until you get past the age identification process. So you have to scan in an ID and then it will allow you through. If the person is not twenty-one, that screen tells you. There's a screen that pops up and says, this person is not twenty-one. Do not continue. We have the technology at our fingertips at every single register to protect us from selling to minors. Our carding policy clearly states that every customer that wants to make a purchase needs to be carded. Once you card them, you scan their IDs. And this is a safety measure to include, to ensure legal sales are enforced. It's a requirement of every transaction. Regardless of customer feelings, no non-manager has ever had the approval to proceed with a transaction without scanning ID. No exceptions. And this brings me to the event of July twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. And what makes this situation so devastating is that carding properly is about the simplest thing you can do. The cashier admitted that they understood the importance of carding. The cashier admitted that they scanned the under-twenty-one ID, got the stop, stop screen, and then they asked the person who was under-twenty-one if they were, and she didn't lie. She said she was not. Yet he still proceeded with the sale. He proceeded with the sale by canceling out all of the warnings and started a new override, or a new transaction, using a manager override, which he later admitted he has used only once, and that he saw that his manager used it on an occasion but was never authorized to use. So this is where I found myself baffled. The cashier neglected to use any of the training, go against every policy and procedure. Needless to say, the employee was terminated on July twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. In reaction to this event, we did tighten our belt on the override transactions. And we do have a report to generate and monitor its use. We also sent out a memo, which I have here. It's dated July twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, so immediately. Um, this is an example of one store where we had every employee, um, go through a pre-shift conversation and reset the expectations, um, with everyone signing and dated. So that's part of their employee record. Every employee that signed off on this understood the consequences and potential negative impact this has on our company and our teams. Non-compliance jeopardizes the stability and future of our company. Every employee signed off on this by mid-August, so I have thirteen, or twelve stores' signatures. And in September, we completed the company-wide legal sales training. Additionally, specifically at Cottage Grove, we have a new team in place. Selena Garcia is our new store manager. She lives here and is local in Cottage Grove. She also has two new, um, assistant store managers that are from this area and are super devoted to the community and live here as residents. And so I have every faith that they will continue to duck, to conduct legal sales and not have something like this happen again.
Okay. Thank you. And by the way, you did a great job.
Do you ask me questions now?
Well, we can. Um, I guess, council, first of all, do you have any questions specific, uh, Councilmember Cambada? You had something? You want to add?
I was really surprised to learn that, um, the person proceeded with the sale after they were informed that the person was underage. If that were my employee, they would have been fired immediately. So.
Yep, they were.
I was happy to hear that that, that was your guys' level of recourse. My question is, well, first of all, I'd like to say, uh, you've articulated your process as well. And, uh, but the, the, you know, is that process effective? And that my follow-up question was going to be, you know, what, what do you do if that process is not followed? And obviously, it ends in termination. So, you know, there's, there's a, there's the human element, and you're always going to have to deal with that. And that's an unfortunate part of, you know, managing and scaling a business. Is that sometimes people just are going to do what they want to do.
Yep.
How many times has this happened? It, you know, when you, you're in a capacity to kind of make corrective actions? And, you know, is, is that your takeaway from, from what happened? Is, is, like you said, the, the additional steps that you've taken? You know, had, is this a once, a once in every couple of years type of scenario? Or, you know, when, I'm, I'm not in the liquor business. So I'm acting, I'm asking, you know, like objectively, you know, is this, is this a challenge for your guys' industry? Is, is getting people to comply with these really well-thought-out processes?
Thank you for the question. Um, I mean, ultimately, the goal is to never have it happen, which is why we have the technology and the processes established and why we invest so much time in the training and education. And in my time, this would be the first one that I've been in a position of authority to be able to make some sizable changes. Cottage Grove, I think we had one, what was it, twenty?
Twenty fifteen.
Twenty fifteen. And I was a store manager at another location at the time. And, um, I don't know the scenario and the details around that one. But that was s- se- six years ago. Prior to that, um, we hadn't had, so like, in, since two thousand eight to twenty fifteen, hadn't failed a sting in any of our liquor stores at all.
So safe to say that your processes had been effective?
Yeah.
And this, this is kind of an anomaly?
This is a human element that is, um, the challenging part. Um, I also, we, we watch cameras too, because we have cameras that watch our, our, um, our counters. And the manager that was on duty was in the back checking in a truck. And so the other part that the cashier did not do is call for help. And so, um, some of what we've looked at is, um, training and team building to make sure that people know who to rely on and who to call for help with, and make sure that your teams are working together in that. And, and so our processes for carding are ninety-nine point nine 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 percent. Like, this is a human element. I, I don't anticipate this happening often. I don't anticipate this, I mean, it was a character flaw in the person and made a poor judgment call. And that's kind of a rogue element that is hard to, I don't know if that answered. To pinpoint, it's hard to pinpoint and correct because I feel like we've done everything else.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. And I think also to, um, Halloween, for example, there's other things, I guess, I, I didn't mention too, is Halloween, people come in with masks and face paints. And we post on our, our, um, doors, do not come in with face paint, do not come in with masks. We will not card you and will not sell to you. So in some of the peak holidays, Memorial Day, Fourth of July, you know, any of the holidays, we do have extra signage that supports, um, carding in our stores. We do have extra, um, like pre-shift meetings and, and, um, team pep talks that talk to our store teams to say, this is one of those wacky weekends. Like, make sure you're on top of your game. Make sure to remind all your staff. Make sure to send all of that. So that I forgot to print off and show. So there's also these, um, spurts of holidays where people just don't have their best game face on, and we need to be prepared for that. So there are us, other conversations that happen throughout the year instead of what is just outlined here.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Olson, you have something to add?
There are several of us sitting at this table this evening who are retail people. The mayor and I are both retail district managers. You know, we've got an independent business owner sitting up here. We've got, uh, we've got plenty of retail experience. And we certainly understand that, um, sometimes despite your best efforts and your best process, there, there are situations that occur that are completely out of your control, just make you shake your head and say, what were you thinking? And it sounds to me as though you've reacted appropriately, you've taken the same steps, uh, I personally would have taken. And, um, the good news is, uh, in this city of Cottage Grove, we have some discretion. You know, one of the things that we look for is whether or not the business that had the issue owns it. We're also looking for, has it been a consistent issue? Has it been something that's occurred several times over the course of a couple of years? Uh, because that would be an indicator of a larger problem, and I don't think that's the case in this situation. So, um, I'm not sure if, if Pete, uh, wants to speak to, to us again about, um, what he would recommend. But, um, I certainly know what I would like to do. Do you have a recommendation, sir?
I do. I, I put what the, um, city code has in there with the imposing the first violation in a twenty-four-month period with a five-hundred-dollar fine and one-day suspension. However, I did add in there, at the city council's discretion, instead of the suspension and fine, that participation of all employees in educational program approved by the Public Safety Department with ninety days. So my recommendation is the same that you, um, came up with back in the spring too, so.
And, and I think that's a reasonable recommendation based on the facts that have been presented here. And, um, certainly, you know, the response to the situation has been, um, appropriate. And, and it looks like you've really tried to, um, you know, not only get your house in order again, but even implement some additional steps that might help you prevent this from happening again. So, um, Mayor, I would, I would make the motion that we follow the Public Safety Director's recommendation with regard to, um, having all of the employees of this location go through an educational program approved by Public Safety Director Kerner within the next ninety days in lieu of the fine and suspension.
Okay, so I have a motion by Councilmember Olson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Thede. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you for, uh, coming and sharing. Um, obviously, as you know, we all know, sometimes the, uh, all the, like, the things that we put into place just don't always work the way we want them to work. But it's good, also good to hear that you had a, uh, you have now a backup where you can actually see if somebody's overriding. So that's a, a new report that I think would be beneficial to you.
Yeah, so we can get them flagged if there's several in a day, which shouldn't be. So, thank you.
Yep, and, and definitely nothing against our, our, um, the, the person that was just before us here with their business. But I guess on the other side of things, we should commend that all the rest of the liquor, uh, places passed. And so.
That's great news.
We like it and we want to have a hundred percent. Uh, but we do want to give kudos to the rest of those that are selling liquor in Cottage Grove, uh, that they did all pass, uh, the liquor compliance check.
We actually have some that have never failed, ever, which is awesome. Really great.
All right, uh, next is twelve, which is council commissary request. We'll start with Councilmember Cambada.
Thank you, Mayor. I got a chance to get out and see the, I wasn't in the Halloween parade, but I got to see it. And, uh, I just have to commend, again, commend everyone, uh, local businesses and volunteers for our strong community engagement. I did make it to a couple of, uh, different trunk-or-treat events. And the people that I did get to talk to were all very enthusiastic and, uh, really enjoyed some of our park spaces. On a separate note, you guys might know that, uh, next week we get to vote, if you haven't already. It's easy to go on the Secretary of State's website. You can find, you can search by your own address and find, uh, all of the candidates that are going to be on your ballot. You can research them. It'll give you links directly to their websites and to their bios and, uh, any other additional information that's been published. So you can go into the polls and be prepared. And if you want, you can vote early, and it'll take you about five minutes.
Fantastic. Yep, get out there and vote, that's for sure. Uh, that it for you?
That's it.
All right, uh, Councilmember Dennis.
Mayor, I will yield my time.
Oh, there we go. Okay, uh, Councilmember Thede is yielding his time. Councilmember Olson?
Well, thanks, Mayor. I'll try to be brief. Um, first of all, I echo the sentiments of Councilmember Cambada with respect to the outstanding Strawberry Fest Monster Bash Parade that we all got to enjoy this past Saturday. Uh, the weather certainly didn't hurt, that's for sure. Um, we're, we're enjoying some bonus fall here, uh, I think for at least one more day, which makes me want to get out to River Oaks and hit the ball around at least one more time if I can. But, um, uh, really, really nice job by the Strawberry Fest Committee as always. And I just want to thank everybody on that committee, including my colleague right here, uh, Councilmember Dave Thede, who's been part of the Strawberry Fest Committee for many years, for all the hard work and effort that goes into organizing those events. They make it look flawless, and, uh, that's just a, a compliment to the work that they do. I also wanted to, uh, echo Councilmember Cambada's sentiments with respect to voting. So, um, for those of you who are looking to vote early, you can do so at the Washington County Service Center here in Cottage Grove from eight to four-thirty, Monday through Friday. It does not take long. Make sure you turn your ballot over because there are judges that you need to vote for too. So, um, you can't just have the front side of the ballot. You need the backside. A lot of important races, and, uh, if you're looking for, you know, more information on where to vote, you can go to votefouroneone.org, and you can find all the information you need. But I want to remind folks that the weekend before the election, which happens to be this coming weekend, you can also vote on Saturday. The service center will be open from ten to three for you to vote early. And on Monday, the seventh, which is the day before the election, you can vote up until five o'clock at the service center if you choose to vote early. So, uh, a really good way to avoid any lines or issues that you might have.
to avoid any lines or issues that you might have, because you got to get to work early and that kind of thing. Some key things to remember, if you are going to vote early, it's considered an absentee ballot. We're at that stage now where your absentee ballot will actually get put directly into the voting machine. So that's something that that happens after the first of the month in November. But any absentee ballot that you've already requested, that you need to deliver, must be returned by mail, if you're sending it by mail, by eight o'clock on November the eighth, in order for your vote to count. And if you're returning that absentee ballot in person, it has to be returned by three P.M. on November the eighth. If you've requested an absentee ballot, and you've decided, guess what? I just want to vote on Tuesday like everybody else, you have to tell the election judges at your polling place that you requested an absentee ballot, but you are going to vote in person. And then they will cancel your absentee ballot, so that you're not in a position where it appears you've tried to vote twice. So you need to be really careful with some of those things. But the reality is, voting early is as easy as it gets. And I can tell you, you know, I can't remember the last time I had to vote on an election day because I vote early. So please make sure you get that done. It's really simple, and it's critically important. Just because it's a midterm election doesn't mean that you stay home. It's just like a college kid, right? You don't skip the midterm in college. Otherwise, you're going to fail the class. So please do your civic duty and vote. And the last thing I want to mention, Mayor, is I know you're probably going to talk about the Santa breakfast at River Oaks, which is coming up. But there is an additional Santa breakfast that is coming up that the Cottage Grove Lions will be putting on, as we do every year. And that will take place on December the fourth at eight A.M. at the Cottage Grove VFW. We will have Santa, we'll have Sparkles the Elf, we'll have all kinds of good food. I'm not sure if we're going to roll out the mini donut machine again this year, but I'm certainly going to try to twist some arms that we do, because we sold a bunch of them last year. And all of those proceeds obviously go back to very good causes in the community. That's what we do as Lions, is we take those funds and we redistribute those to, you know, people in need and organizations like the Friends in Need Food Shelf and those sorts of things. So put that on your calendar, December fourth, eight A.M. at the Cottage Grove VFW, to see Santa and Sparkles and all of us Lions in our Lions gear. And we'd be happy to serve you a really nice breakfast and hope you have a really great time. And with that, sir, I'll turn it back to you.
All right. Thank you. Two things real quick, well, maybe three, kinda. One is, I assume from a staff perspective, we may have Molly or somebody come to the next council meeting to update all of us on the upcoming fun festivities that are going to be coming. So you, Councilmember Olson mentioned the Santa breakfast, but I know there's a whole list of them. And the only one thing I did want to point out for the general public is because it's a little different this year, but it's, it's amazing and it's cool, is normally we have a tree lighting ceremony that would be like before our city council meeting and such. But this year, on Wednesday, November thirtieth, we're gonna, we're doing what's called a hometown holiday celebration here at City Hall. It'll be from five to seven. And we'll have the Christmas tree up and going. We'll have Santa, Mrs. Claus. We're gonna have reindeer. We're gonna have food trucks. We're gonna have the Santa letters. I mean, there's all kinds of stuff that's going to be going on here. So this is bigger than what we've done in the past versus having Santa here. We got the music from the Park High Choir. So I encourage everybody, and we'll talk more about this at the next council meeting, but mark your calendar for Wednesday, November thirtieth, here at City Hall from five to seven. And then the other one, real quick one I'll mention, the Holiday Train, of course, is arriving. I've got my shirt on tonight. Will be arriving on Monday, December twelfth, here in Cottage Grove. It's the first time since before the pandemic, and they're back out with music and such. It's gonna be a great event. It's open, it's free to the public. And any, there is an opportunity for money to be collected, food to be collected and that, and that goes to our local Friends in Need Food Shelf. That's what the event is all about. But again, come enjoy the, the arrival of the train is around five o'clock. I think we start festivities from three-thirty, goes to about six, six-thirty. And then the last item I just wanted to mention from the general public is because we did have, I'll call it another, power outage that happened earlier this week. I'm looking at our public works director back there. He's smiling at me because I chatted with him. I just want, this, this one, though, was different than, just to share with the, the general pub, because I did have some of the homeowners in some of the same areas reaching out to me. So here we go again. I will share with you that in this particular case, this was not something that was very specific to a particular area of our community. Matter of fact, over eight thousand households and businesses covering Cottage Grove, Woodbury, Sample Park, Newport, and I think even Old Cottage Grove, Pine Cooley. I believe it was unbelievable how wide this was. And it was like a, some type of, from what I understand, like a total failure at, at one of the substations that kind of covers all this area. So I know sometimes people think that some of these issues or these particular issues have been specific to an area of Cottage Grove, or it's specific to the growth that's happening. I can't speak, to be frank with you, to the total message of the growth piece, but I can assure you that in this particular case, this was not just a certain area of Cottage Grove that got affected by this. We did get notified from our representative for Xcel Energy that it was kind of a total, something happened at the substation and it completely went down. And that's why it wasn't out very long, is they were able to get it all up, but they had to cycle it carefully so the thing didn't all crash again. So for those that were asking about it, that's what happened. It was a, a specific issue that wasn't related to blowing transformers or anything like that. This was a, a failure at the substation. I believe that's the one at Hinton and Seventieth, if my understanding is right. So I just wanted to pose that out there. Hopefully, they've got those issues addressed now, it sounds like, and we won't have those issues hopefully going forward. I'm knocking on wood somewhere here. Next on our agenda is a workshop open to the public. We do not have one this evening. Fourteen is a workshop closed to the public, which we do have one this evening. And I just want to read for the public before we move into there. We will have a closed public meeting pursuant to Minnesota Statute thirteen D point zero five, subsection three B, attorney-client privilege to discuss acquisition and eminent domain litigation for the East Point Douglas, Jamaica project. And so being that we'll be meeting privately with our attorney, that will be a closed session. And so at this point, we won't be closing in here. We'll be moving to the conference room with our staff. So everybody have a great evening. We'll see you in a couple of weeks.